Chair calls the meeting back to order. The board in executive session held an informational session with legal counsel, and we made no determination. At this time, the chair will call for a recess and will reconvene at ten fifteen. Yeah. This is just the first round, bro. Who went over there for Suzo?
You guys have trust again?
Saw that? Okay. I just need to know if we get the waiver, like what to do. Because I wasn't even gonna do any opening comments now. We're just gonna go into the waiver. Yeah. So I need to pull that script back up that I was reading. You're in, right? He's in.
I don't see him.
Chair, a script? This one?
Hit up there. And then use that.
This? Is that open or no one?
Yeah, and then close this once you don't get mixed up. You know, the other one. And there you go.
Go to...
Yeah, just the one side.
Okay, so I'm gonna pick it up at... Sorry about that. The chair is now reconvening in an open session. The June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the OHA Board of Trustees. It will now be taking up item number two, which is new business. New business item A is a request to waive committee referral as an action item BF number twenty-five fifty-one. And this waiver is to approve of the OHA BNIAM budget for the fiscal BNIAM periods twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty twenty-seven, to include salary adjustments for existing personnel, addition, modification, and deletion of positions, updates to OHA's organizational chart and related amendments to program structures and resource allocations from the Committee on Budget and Finance to the Board of Trustees pursuant to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws, which are dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Article eight, section M. The floor is now open for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Suzo.
I'd like to move to waive committee referral for action item BF twenty-five dash fifty-one as presented.
It has been moved to waive referral of action item Budget and Finance twenty-five fifty-one from the Committee on Budget and Finance directly to the full board. Lahua, is there any public discussion on the waiver?
No one is signed up to speak on this item.
Trustees, are there any comments or discussion on the waiver?
Yes.
Trustee Akaka, you're recognized.
I'd like to move to amend the waiver to ensure that our kulianas are fulfilled with whatever could happen with this budget. So...
Trustee Akaka, can you clarify your proposed amendment? If you can provide it in writing, that would be very helpful.
Okay. I'll say it first. So limit to waiver to only the consideration of a stopgap FY twenty-six budget that funds limited OHA expenditures for personnel, travel, and P-card spending in July twenty twenty-five and defers further action on the FY twenty-six and FY twenty-seven BNIAM budget to action before the Budget and Finance Committee and Board of Trustees.
Is there a second? Not that it's required.
Second.
We talked about it, okay? Trustees' discussion? Trustee Ahuna.
Just a quick question, just to clarify. So I thought we had to approve, looking at the budget, before we make any amendments to the budget. I thought the first one was... Oh. Okay.
Yeah, Trustee Ahuna, it's my understanding that Trustee Akaka's, we cannot entertain the budget because she is proposing a stopgap.
I'm open to discussing it.
You have the stopgap.
Yeah, so last week, part of my concern in that Budget and Finance Committee meeting was that we've had various versions of the budget, and there has been concern in terms of the time that's needed to properly go through this material and to be able to fully understand what it is and know what the differences are between the various budget versions. And one of the concerns that I had stated, which I'm still concerned about, is making sure that our kulianas are fulfilled, that our OHA employees are paid, and that contracts, they be fulfilled, and whatever else kuliana that needs to be fulfilled. I'm open to hearing what our options are, but that is... That has been one of my concerns. So I did want to address that to ensure that if things are not moving as they should and we have all these versions, that we have this option.
Trustee Akaka, there is only one version of the budget, and it is the version that is sitting before you today, that is certified by OHA's chief financial officer and the RGP consultants that have been certifying OHA's financial audits and reports for several years. It has been posted in full accordance of the state sunshine law and in the public, as well as all the trustees, has been given more than three, more than three days to review this budget. So I think there's been ample enough time to review the budget. And we'd like to give the opportunity to present that budget and give the administration their opportunity to present their budget, but we need to get to the next step. Trustee Suzo.
Mr. Chair, Mahalo, Mr. Chair. I understand what Trustee Akaka is saying. I personally disagree. And that's taking into account our mission and our goal and the objective of opposing our kuliana for this organization. The reason why I say those things is because we have people in this room, our beneficiaries, and it is our kuliana to listen to them and have the opportunity, especially for administration, to present once again. I know there's been multiple opportunities. So I would like to afford everyone here in this room the opportunity to have that discussion at the very least. There will be opportunities for amendments, support, opposition, and at the end of the day, hopefully, we all walk out of here with the budget that everyone is satisfied with, and we can move forward as this organization. So Mahalo.
Mr. Trustee Suzo. Trustee Ahuna?
Yeah, no, I just, I think, I think we're all on the same page, everyone. I think we gotta move the but, this waiver first, and then we can discuss all those amendments to that. But if we don't move this, then we're gonna be stuck. We have nothing to talk about. So I just wanted to make sure that we're clear, and if you guys can give us some advice on if we was to waive this, will we have opportunity to amend?
We'll let board counsel answer that question.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the appropriate way to approach this is to consider the stopgap budget as an amendment that would be considered for a interim period, and then after however many days or weeks you want to evaluate the stopgap, then you could adopt a longer-term budget. But I think to limit the waiver to consideration only of the stopgap doesn't achieve the broader goal of getting to a discussion about what the budget ought to look like. If that makes sense.
Trustee Lindsay.
I just want to be fair and say that I did not review the last budget that's on the table right now responsibly, and I take my fiduciary duty very seriously. I do know of some items on the budget that I'm not in favor of. So I would tend to want to just wait a little bit and look at it again between our trustees, the budget committee, and even administration, so that we can come to a happy medium, that everybody's happy with it instead of having so much negativism. I think that's important, that we follow the processes, the right processes. So that's just my input.
Sure. The budget in front of us, I believe, is a good budget. No budget makes everybody happy. But I'm willing, and I hope most of my trustees are willing, to go through this budget line by line, to make amendments, to address concerns people may have. That is the democratic process that we are going to go through today. We started this budget back in March, and if I can get to the presentation, we will articulate how the process we went through had never been done at OHA before. It was the most open, the most transparent, the most empowering process for our directors, our paeas, our community, to give input. We have a product in front of us that we can now amend, and I think it's a good product. Can it be better? I guarantee you, at the end of the day, it's gonna be better. Will it please everyone, Chair? It's not going to. But our job today is to pass a budget by eleven fifty-nine, on the last day of the fiscal year, so that our employees and our lahui who are watching right now know that we can lead this organization and we can provide the resources to move forward. We do budget realignments, three to four a year. So there are more than ample enough opportunities as we move into the next fiscal year to do budget realignments. But I really believe this waiver is important, and it can get us to talk about what we want to talk about. Trustee Suzo.
Mr. Chair, Mahalo, Mr. Chair. I understand also what Trustee Lindsay is saying. I feel that there's no better opportunity to address this budget rather than right here, right now, in the public, so that no one questions the process or the transparency of the process. And so I support moving towards the waiver and having a quality discussion about the budget. So Mahalo.
Mr. Chair, if I may, my hand has been raised.
Go for it.
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate that very much. And what I want to say at first is that some of the innovations you brought to the budget, as well as the team have brought, are outstanding, and they show a commitment to broadening the base of support that we provide to native Hawaiians throughout the state. I'm all for that. But I'm also for what Akaka has presented, the idea of amending the waiver, not amending the budget, but amending the waiver. And that would be important because many of us need time to process a little more much that has been brought to the table in the last few days and the last few weeks in terms of the budget. And we can certainly do that, give ourselves a little bit of time, continue to meet the needs of OHA. We're not under the same kind of pressure that the legislature is to meet a final deadline. We certainly could provide another month or so, and I think during that time, we can come to an agreement as to what we want to do together. So I would be in support of Trustee Akaka's recommendation, her proposal, that we amend the waiver. Thank you. I apologize, but I haven't heard anything through the microphones.
I'm sorry. I think what the chair is gonna ask of Trustee Akaka through a point of information is to provide exactly what you were referring to. Trustee Akaka, point of order. Point of information. Can you provide the trustees a clarification of what you are talking about? I, to be specific, what is the proposal?
So I asked what some of the options are before us to ensure that people are within our organization are paid and that our contracts are fulfilled.
One of order. She has the floor. All right. All right, all right. Please continue trustee Akaka.
So last week, as I had stated, um, there are different versions of the budget. And in trying to mindfully go through these budgets and asking for asking for a red line, an option with the red lines to be provided so we know the differences between the different budgets as these are hundreds and thousands of pages for us to mindfully review and to know what the difference were differences are and edits are between the various versions. And then asking, what are our options in going forward to ensure that to ensure that our OHA organization, our staff are being paid and that our contracts are fulfilled.
Trustee Suzan.
Mahalo, Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify my point of order. Um, there was a motion on the table to um, approve a waiver so that we could potentially have those discussions on the action item uh, and raise also the concerns that trustee Akaka has without that waiver, without moving forward with a meeting. Um, I I don't believe we should be having those conversations right now, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Trustee Akaka, you're asking to propose something that is not before the board and it is out of order. We can take that up as an amendment as a first item of discussion. But what you're asking us is to pre-approve something that is not in front of us and is not approved.
I'd like to ask Everett to come and explain how we can go forward with what I'm asking.
Is not recognized. That motion is denied. That request is denied. We have legal counsel here that can advise you. And I've advised you that your motion is not approved.
Even though it was seconded?
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Huna?
This is on trustee Akaka's proposed, no? Oh, on the waiver, yes, on the waiver, yes. Sorry, thank you.
Say my name.
Trustee Huna?
Aye.
Mahalo. Trustee Akaka?
Can you put on the screen what we're voting on? So it's not on the amendment, it is on the original?
It is the agenda item that has been agendized properly. Continue the roll call vote.
Trustee Akina?
Are we voting on the original item that is printed be and?
That's correct. We are voting on the on the agenda to waive.
Okay, then.
Board's discussion, entertain trustee Akaka's amendment then.
Thank you. Aole.
Mahalo. Trustee Alapa? Trustee Galutaria? Trustee Lindsay?
No.
Trustee Suzan?
Aye.
Trustee Wahehe? Kerkeheli?
Aye.
And trustee uh, Kaka? Aole. And trustee Alapa? We have one abstention, we have three aole and we have five yes. You need six to.
We need six? Yeah, go on, next slate.
Usually abs current too, because with the with retention.
Trustee Alapa? I'm asking you to consider your abstention and vote in the affirmative so we can put this budget before the board. Otherwise, we have no fiscal funds at the end of the day for all of our employees and our lahui.
May I ask, will we be able to ask for um, an emergency fund to?
Trustee Alapa, I promise you, we have to get to the next step and then we have all of those options available to us.
Okay.
Would you like to change your vote?
Yes.
Nehua, please record trustee Alapa's vote as a yes.
Trustee Alapa is a yes. Confirm?
How many votes do we have?
We have six yes votes. Motion passes.
Waiver is adopted. We are now moving on to action item number two. Wow. We gotta get composed there. Yes, hold on. Okay, um, we need to, so we got the waiver done. We need to get the action item before us. Yeah, okay. Let me move to the next. This is action item number two, right? Yeah, okay. I'm gonna read the action item. Okay. All right, we're now moving on to item number B in new business, which is action item Budget and Finance, number twenty-five fifty-one. This is the approval of the OHA biennial budget for the fiscal biennial periods twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, which is fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven to include salary adjustments for existing personnel, the addition, the modification and the deletion of positions and updates to OHA's organizational chart and related amendments to program structures and resource allocations. Take a deep breath, everyone. Aloha, Kako. Mahalo Nui for joining us today. As we reach this important point in OHA's journey, the board's approval of the biennial budget for fiscal years twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven, it's important to remember that this process is not just about numbers. It's about values. It's about purpose. It's about the future that we are shaping together. Budgets are often described as statements of priorities, and that's true. But when we focus only on priorities in the abstract can too easily become a contest of agendas, a source of division rather than collaboration. And we've seen some of that tension emerge in recent weeks. But for me, this budget reflects more than a debate or a list of line items. It reflects our moku auha, our kuliana and the shared story that we are writing through our decisions. It's about how we lead. It's about how we serve. Not in headlines or in the media or dramatic gestures, but in the quiet, the consistent hana, the reading and the rereading and the asking of the hard questions about working late and showing up with integrity, especially when no one's watching. Today is not about winners and losers. It's about doing right by our people. It's about remembering who we serve, about remembering why we're all here. And so let's guide us as we move forward together. And so I want to welcome all of you. And I intend to present the board's budget. The schedule that we are going to adhere to today, the board of trustees will present its board budget over thirty minutes. That budget has been uploaded as an action item. Following the board's presentation, the administration will be given thirty minutes to present their version of the budget and whatever they would like to present, should they choose to. At that point, we will go to public testimony. And we will take testimony from the general public and for those that are participating online. At that point, in the interest of people that may have um, come from far away and would like to express their community concerns or announcements, we may take that up at that point as well. And then following all of that, we will then take amendments on this budget. We'll do that as long as it takes so that we can get a budget for the end of today. Trustees, any questions? If not, let's get the budget out. Let's do some work. Nehua, please pull up the budget presentation. No. Trustees, I'm gonna start with the PowerPoint presentation on the board's budget. This is up uploaded in your folder. Meeting folder number one. We'll start with the first page. And I should probably do this. Sorry, Paul, there needs a room. Please reference the PowerPoint and the action item in your board materials. We'll start with the first slide. Time now. It's ten forty-five. And I'm gonna try and be done by eleven fifteen. Next slide, please. Trustees, the budget before you. Next slide. Is OHA's biennial budget as proposed by the board of trustees for the next fiscal year. It is entitled Ekukuluho. And it is to build on OHA's foundation and progress through accountability and relationships with our lahui, through advocacy and native rights and practices through civic engagement, through revitalization of OHA's internal capacity to better serve the needs of our lahui for generations to come. This budget reflects our priorities to promote transparency and rebuild trust with both internal and community stakeholders. Next slide. Trustees, HR is chapter ten. Clearly gives the board of trustees the power and duties to manage, invest and administer trust assets, including property for native Hawaiians. Gives the board of trustees the power to develop and implement policies that provide grants and technical and financial assistance. The general duties of this board is to develop a strategic plan, to organize the administration's structure and to coordinate with government agencies. We serve as a clearinghouse for programs and funding, conduct research, promote the establishment of service agencies that execute these duties. We are not a direct service provider. We provide resources to the many nonprofits and the many community organizations that serve our lahui various different ways. We provide opportunities as statute requires for beneficiaries to participate in the preparation of each biennial and supplemental budget. I will also add that in referencing the current delegation of authority that was originally drafted and executed by former CEO Kamana Opono Crab and amended by the former CEO Colin Kippen, the delegation of authority gives the board of trustees the exclusive and the only authority to approve a budget, no one else. Next slide. Our spending priorities in this budget, number one is to make OHA an employer of choice to address the internal morale and lack of equitable salaries that have plagued OHA for many, many years. To also address the vacancy rates that we have been dealing with for many, many years as well. And so this budget invests in malamaing our ohana, attracting and retaining top talent, rewarding excellence at every level and for the first time in a long time, providing competitive compensation and benefits such as the work done by the ad hoc committee that was put together in February that finished its work on May first. I want to Mahalo trustee Suzan, our Chair Emerita Lindsay and our HR Director Corey Nakamoto for their hard work that addressed every salary at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs that was a hundred thousand dollars or below. In this budget is something that no state agency has ever been able to achieve, and that is a paid family leave program that will provide up to sixteen weeks of paid family leave to OHA's employees in the event of childbirth or in the event of sickness or in caring for a loved one. One hundred percent of your pay for a qualifying event for sixteen weeks. That does not exist anywhere in the state of Hawaii. We're also doing bonuses to recruit and incentivize hiring and we Mahalo the administration for their hard work in doing that. We have also implemented a teleworking policy that gives OHA another opportunity to be the employer of choice so we can attract and retain the top talent with competitive salaries that is in this budget. We invest in operational processes and infrastructure improvements for the timely and efficient operations of procurement and payment processing. We invest in executing transformational programs and services. Next slide. OHA's biennial budget follows with Mauna Imaulola and it begins there where we identify spending priorities of the budget and key constraints must be considered. The first of them is a dependency on the disbursement of funds from the Public Land Trust revenues and the state of Hawaii's general funds. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs receives twenty-one point five million dollars in public land trust revenues from the state of Hawaii. And then this last budget just passed by the legislature, we received three million dollars in unrestricted funds to our through the general fund. We also have an adherence to a spending policy and this board has adopted that we will withdraw no more than five percent from the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund that is calculated over a twenty-month rolling average. We also accommodate our salaries and fringe that make up almost fifty percent of our budget. Almost twenty-three million dollars of our fifty million dollars core budget is dedicated to salaries and personnel. It is a major investment by this board in our people and those that will come to OHA to serve our lahui. Finally, it honors large and longstanding commitments, including financial pledges through provisos and match funding. Our three million dollars to to pay the debt service to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands so that they can do infrastructure improvements, develop more housing. The investment we make to the Native Hawaiian Legal Corporation that we have been doing for years. The investment we make to the Native Hawaiian Legal Corporation that we have been doing for years. All of these investments are very, very important for our lahui. None more important than the 17 Hawaiian-focused charter schools that we provide dedicated funding to. And this budget will provide more funding than any Hawaiian-focused charter school has ever received once it is amended. Next slide. This is an important slide to focus on for our trustees and for the general public because it gives you an idea of where we started and how we got here today. I assumed the chairmanship of the board on December 4th, 2024. And early in January, Kapo Hana advising the board of trustees on the budget development, working with the CFO at the time, provided a schedule for what the biennial budget would look like. That was in one of the draft minutes that was available, the draft minutes for available is on January 2030 at a board of trustees meeting. One of the things that in the January, February timeframe that this board did under the leadership of the chair was I empowered each office and each trustee to look at their calendar and look at their own budgets and determine what type of resources would you need to do the job you need to do to be the best trustee you can, as well as invest in your staff, in professional development. Look at your calendar, look at the trips that you need to take so that you can get better information to be a good trustee. So that had never been done before. Each office was given the opportunity to come up with their own budget. And that was a struggle because people didn't know how to do that. So we elicited the help of the financial team that came in and sat with each individual trustee to work on their budget together. Those budgets were then sent to the board's office that communicated with the administration on incorporating that into the board's budget. Also, this board adopted the ad hoc committee in February on salaries. And we tasked our trustees to look at OHA's current compensation rates and address them and provide suggestions to the board that we could consider. In late March and early April, a budget presentation was given to all paeas in the board of trustees. And on April 2nd was the first opportunity when the administration presented an initial rough draft, a first look at what a budget should look like. Also during that time, the chair reached out to every office and asked, what are your priorities? What are things important in your district? What are things that haven't been addressed for quite some time? Where are site visits that you've been to and went to that we should invest in? And we asked for that information as well. Also, in mid-April, the budget and finance chair and the chair sent on a memo to the administration informing them that we would be given an opportunity to every single pae at OHA to come before the board during the month of May and present their individual budgets. Because I truly believed that for this board to take on the budget in its entirety and complexity was too much. And I wanted to give each individual pae a director, their managers, their frontline staff, the opportunity to put together a presentation, showcase the good work that they do, and then come before the board and present their budget requests vetted through the administration. And then give them an opportunity to let us what else we could invest in as a board so that they can do the best job possible. That memo went out on April 23rd. The administration took this budget out to community as statute requires and gave the opportunity as best they could without the ad hoc salary commission recommendations, without a final board budget, to get community input on what was being proposed. And on April 30th was the, was the second time the board was presented a budget from the administration. April 30th. On May 14th, we then started something that hadn't in most people's memory been done before here at OHA. For the next two weeks, we sat right here at this board table and we had every single pae give presentations on their budget. We did 17 presentations. And after each presentation, each director was sent questions to clarify their budget requests. They had a week to respond and every single pae responded. And this board received over 219 responses from the 17 individual paeas that had a chance to come before this board and put together a presentation on what they needed so that they could be the best pae they could. I myself sat in that seat and presented the board's proposed budget on May 27 and took questions from all of you as well. On June 2nd, the administration proposed a revised budget based on their April 30th presentation. It included now the ad hoc salary committee recommendations and it plus up their April 30th proposal by about $4 million. And it also included the proposed leveling of executive leadership team salaries that the administration was requesting based on the state's salary commission recommendations that increased salaries for the legislature, the governor, the judiciary. So using the same methodology, the administration applied that same metrics and yardstick to certain salaries here at OHA, and they proposed that to us on June 2nd. Following that, the budget and finance chair and myself met to work on the budget to take what the administration proposed on June 2nd, to look at every single question, all 217 of them that had been provided, and come to an agreement on what we felt would be the best budget for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We would have loved to do it with all of you. But that is not allowed due to state sunshine law. So we worked hard. We spent over 100 hours on this budget for one entire week, including all of Kamehameha Day. And that is the budget that went before the board on June 17th. Over 110 estimated hours of deliberation. That budget was posted publicly on June 18th. And unfortunately, because of a recent law signed by the governor, it rendered that budget and that meeting unable to happen. This is why we're here today with the waiver. The budget before you is the only budget that has been certified by OHA's chief financial officer, Brian Lee, and his team. And that is before you today. Next slide. What compromises comprises OHA's budget? OHA's budget is comprised via its core and its non-core budget. The core or the corpus of the budget is through its trust fund. That is in the green. Followed by its commercial properties at Kakaako Makai, Nalama Kukui, 500 North Nimitz Highway, as well as 501 Sumner. We also have legacy funds. We have federal funds. We have a total operating budget. We have the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund. And within our budget are the various different paeas that have individual budgets for the biennial, and they are listed there as well. Next slide. OHA's spending policy. OHA's spending policy is articulated below and adopted by this board includes a fixed percentage of no more than 5% to the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund's average market value, the ceded land revenues received by OHA, the state general funds, and any funds available but not spent in previous fiscal years, what we call the fiscal reserve that are held within the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund. That is our spending policy, and that is a top-line number on the first tables of the budget. Next slide. This present, this budget before you addresses, like I said before, our personnel and fringe. It makes up 35% of the budget or $25.3 million. In FY27, it represents $26.1 million or 40% of our budget. Our budget is the same like every other budget across the state. The majority of it, over almost half of it, goes to personnel and salaries and fringe and healthcare and benefits and dental and vision and overtime and vacation pay. The next part of our budget is in our grants where we dedicate almost 20% in each fiscal year to a bunch of different initiatives. The next is contracts. 17% in '26 or $12 million and 13% in '27 or $8 million go to contracts. These are for professional and legal services. And finally, equipment represents 10% and 8% of our overall budget. Next slide. We have overhead. 9% and 8% respectively cover our overhead, our programs, our debt service, and finally, our travel. We do a lot of traveling. Travel is a big part of our budget, especially the required community meetings and um mea i meetings that we do on our neighbor islands because we take our entire team to every island across the state to have our community meetings as well as the international travel and the travel to the continental United States that costs a significant amount of resources. Next slide. What are some unique things? Well, we talked about OHA's employer of choice. We have an optimal headcount. We invest in professional development and we give the opportunity for our paeas to create their own professional development programs as well as our individual trustees. We are, we realign and create new positions. We are implementing a paid family leave program, and we're making significant salary adjustments so that we can be a competitor in the marketplace through competitive personnel and fringes to attract top talent. These salaries are long overdue. They address disparate wage adjustments from the previous administration. They advance our recruitment efforts to engage ideal candidates. Our goal is to fill as many vacancies as possible, and we have tasked that to our administration. But we need to give them the tools to do that. Finally, this positions OHA as a leader for providing a unique benefit not currently offered by any other place statewide, and that is a paid family leave program. Next slide. What are some other things that we do in this budget? This budget proposes to contract with Olelo. So our board meetings are broadcast statewide just like the legislature, just like HEART, just like the city council. Not on YouTube, not just with Zoom, but so that Olelo Community Media, one of the PIGS, the public broadcasting organizations can broadcast all of our meetings statewide year round. And it vests in completely redesigning and revamping our website. Our Kavai Ola page. It invests in a podcast. It invests in a digital application. We invest in community market research so that we can establish a baseline for how to execute a communication strategy so we can address the question that we are tired of hearing every day. What does OHA do for me? What is OHA? We do that through culturally grounded storytelling. And we brought in our strategic partnerships across the state. Next slide. We better serve the lahui through efficiency. This budget provides sufficient inter-island OHA vehicles on every island. On Maui, on Kauai, on Molokai, on Kauai, I said Kauai already, and on Hawaii Island. Every island will have a vehicle that is used by our BSAs on that island or used by the host trustee or administration when they come in to do their site visits. We use world-class tools to inform decisions. We do office upgrades for safety and collaboration. We invest in foremost standard operating procedures and evolving technology and data opportunities. Next slide. We invest in the financial strength of OHA. We, I hear this often. We have a $600 million Native Hawaiian Trust Fund, and why isn't it a billion dollars? How do we get our trust fund to a billion dollars? Well, we do that in these investments that have been passed and adopted by the board of trustees in October, the Native Hawaiian Trust Fund Investment Policy. And this does exactly that. It invests in our director of investments. It gives him the tools to do his job and to work with consultants that can grow this portfolio. And it honors our investment and land management committee chair and his recommendations in this budget. As we prepare to develop Kakaako Makai or any of our other commercial lands, we have a unique opportunity to do something we haven't done at OHA in a long time. Or maybe anytime for that matter. Issue revenue bonds, general purpose bonds, so that we can do construction projects, and this does that. It puts money into the inception of the process so that we can legally issue bonds, a unique statutory power that OHA has. It funds OHA's programs and grants and services and capital investments, and it invests in cutting-edge investment tools and consultants. It utilizes external experts in private markets. The manager of manager strategy we have had in the past is not this board's policy. The policy is to invest in expertise through consultants that can give us sound advice on the private markets and asset allocation so our director of investments and our chair can drive that fund growth and sustainability. Next slide. Through empowering our community partners through education, leadership and civic engagement, this budget, when it is amended, will give more money to the 17 Hawaiian-focused charter schools than they have ever received from the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. It will provide scholarships for higher education graduates that have their baccalaureate degrees that want to go and pursue their master's degrees or be doctors or be lawyers. It brings back a program that did amazing things for OHA, Aha'opio, that we will launch in July of 2026. As a graduate of Aha'opio, 1991, I wouldn't be sitting here today if I didn't have that opportunity that visionaries back then in the late 80s and the early 90s provided. We bring back Aha'opio. We have OIV leadership in healthcare by partnering with the John A. Burns Native Hawaiian Health Center and invest in the next generation of kaoka, of doctors, kanaka doctors that we desperately need, especially in rural communities. We invest in capital improvement projects across the state. And we supercharge our Hawaiian registry program so we can build that from 40,000 to 100,000 through a lot of different innovative ways to engage our beneficiaries. We are meeting our lahui where they are at, and we're equipping them for the future. Next slide. What will OHA be able to accomplish with this biennial budget? We're going to exemplify what OHA does to ho'olu lahui aloha. This will advocate for native Hawaiians. It will provide them the resources they need. It will facilitate collaboration. We will be the employer of choice in this state. We will improve our operational processes and infrastructure improvements, and we will execute transformational programs and services. We will provide more than 13 opportunities for beneficiaries across the paayaina to improve their well-being through grants, through programs, through services and through sponsorships that touch every aspect of our lahui, from education to finances, to economics, to OIV well-being and to be culturally grounded. Last slide. What is OHA's budget ultimately about? This is about our people. It's about giving them the opportunities so they can succeed. When I think about our lahui, think about where I come from, the small fishing village of Miloli in Salconna, where there is no electricity. There is no running water. And there's about 300 native Hawaiians that struggle each and every day. Our programs can affect their lives. The opportunities we provide and invest in can change their lives. And that's what this budget is about. It is a transformational budget. It is a deliberate budget. And it is a budget I am confident that we can make even better through this democratic process that we have in front of us. I'm going to let the action item speak for itself, and I'm going to stop with three minutes to go. And at this time, the chair would like to recognize the administration if they would like to take the opportunity to present their version of the budget. Kapo Hana, you are recognized.
Mahalo Chair, and as I mentioned to you last Friday when you called me regarding the agenda and offered me the 30 minutes to provide the administration's budget. I mentioned at that time that we had already spent over 28 hours doing 21 presentations to the board, and we would not be able to do that in 30 minutes. I think the best use of our time, and I appreciate the opportunity to use it in a way that I think is more productive. You can go to the next slide. Let me just talk about the, the impacts of the process that we went through and with the budget that is before the trustees for discussion and vote. So our, our timeline is, is similar, not exactly the same, but there's some context here that I think is important, especially because, you know, Trustee Ahuna was traveling, Trustee Akina has been traveling. So I want to make sure that we ground our timeline in the most recent events. So May 7th, May 14th through the 27th, administration did provide budget briefings to the Board of Trustees, 21 presentations, over 28 hours. And that's just in presentation. That's not hours spent in putting the presentations together. Provided by all the OHA divisions and departments, we provided a line-by-line review with the full BOT being scrutinized pretty, pretty closely for what we were requesting in our budget and, and rightly so. Previously, I was the Budget Chief at the State Hawaii Senate, so I think I'm uniquely qualified to not only fully understand and appreciate the rigor of budgets, but also the fidelity of the process that is required to put forth an accurate and transparent budget for our beneficiaries and the, and the trustees. On May 14th through the 30th, there were follow-up budget questions sent by Summer Silva, our BOT Chief of Staff, to the Paeia Directors. I said over 100, but mahalo Chair, yes, it was over 200 questions and answers that were, were provided to our administration and responses that we provided back to the Chief of Staff. And the budget follow-up questions and responses were not shared with the Board of Trustees. From June 2nd, 2025, administration presents the Fiscal Year 2627 proposed biennial budget based on the BOT feedback from the budget briefings. And this is, this is important because this June 2nd version of the budget took into account all of the questions and the feedback that was provided at the table during the 21 presentations to ensure that not only did we have a collaborative, transparent budget before us that incorporated not just the administration, but the full board in this, in the budget that was presented on June 2nd. So this June 2nd budget, I would qualify it as truly a transparent collaborative budget between the full administration and the full board. On June 2nd through the 18th, administration's budget was then restructured and revised. This includes org chart restructuring, funding and FTE deletions, additions, reductions, trade-offs and transfers. And it's really important to note here that on June 25th, when we had our impact briefing with four of the trustees in attendance, that Chair Emerita shared with the public that at no time on June 2nd was there ever request from the full board for a revised or new budget. It was never asked by the, by the board for a new one or a revised one. That's important to note. June 18th, it proposed revised version number two. So if the administration's budget is version one, a version two of the biennial budget was posted publicly online. This was the first time that trustees were seeing it, the first time administration was seeing it and beneficiaries. What was shocking and disturbing about the budget that was posted on June 18th is that there was no comparison, no opportunity for those who were reading the June 18th proposed version two biennial budget to know what changes were made. And so the timeline that was provided for trustees and administration and even beneficiaries who were interested to be able to do a comprehensive review of what had changed from the fully vetted administrative, administration and full board review on June 2nd. No possible way to do that in the, in the timeframe. There were no line-by-line comparisons. There was no red line provided. We were just provided a brand-new budget, version number two. And everybody was left on their own devices to figure out what was different from version one that was fully vetted by both administration and the full board and what was now publicly available online. On June 23rd, 2025, errors were identified and changes were made to a proposed version number three. These changes were provided to the Budget and Finance Committee at the table. On June 24th, 2025, additional errors were identified and changes made once again to a now proposed version number four biennial budget. Changes that were not provided to all trustees, so I provided that over this weekend. Two days prior to this discussion. And it is the version four because anytime changes are made, it's no longer the previous version. June 25th, 2025, administration and we were very grateful for the opportunity to present our proposed budget impacts to trustees. And I will share with you that if we are going to follow the legislative process for budgeting, this is also part of the budgeting process where we are allowed, the general public, those from the different divisions are able to provide budget impacts. It's, it's essential. It's critical so that the board has a clear understanding of the impacts that this new budget that has never been heard, was never vetted by the full board, was not scrutinized, certainly at the level the administration's budget was line-by-line. So we needed to have an opportunity to share with the trustees for that were in attendance, mahalo Chair Luana Lapa, Vice Chair John Wahehe IV, Chair Emerita Hululunzi and Trustee Akaka, for giving us an opportunity to tell you how negatively impacted our paeas were by this new version that was provided online. Without consultation, without transparency, there were changes made to staffing, to organizational structures. There were reductions of programs, elimination of programs. Some budgets were gutted 97% left with barely anything in their budgets. And yet these are the people that are expected to deliver on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. What is extremely disturbing is that in this second version that was posted online on June 18th, there were numerous deletions from the administration's budget, again, that was fully vetted with this board. And at no time was, did the board give us any instruction that we should delete anything. Standard budgeting practice would require you that if you do not want to fund something, you don't delete it as if it doesn't exist. You just zero it out. So the version that has been provided to you, that's in front of you, has been changed various times and there are deletions. So without this opportunity to provide you our impact statements, which I did ask for our paeas to put together in a very quick turnaround, to please list out and try to determine where those deletions happen, where the reductions happen, where the eliminations happened. Because in all fairness, the trustees should know where these changes occurred. The fact that we have a budget before you without those track changes is not reasonable and it certainly does not provide you with comprehensive information to make an informed decision. On June 30th, today, we sit before you and the BOT Chair is presenting his proposed version number four biennial budget. Next slide. So as a result of all of the things that have occurred based off of that timeline that I've just shared with you, there were many negative impacts that occurred both operationally and strategically. There were budget revisions done without consultation and transparency. And the operational impact is that it undermines coordination across our divisions. It creates confusion and misalignment in execution. And this is done when you have individuals in the organization who are not charged with operations, making decisions on operations. We have subject matter experts who are paid and hired to make these professional decisions on behalf of the organization. They're on the front lines. They're the ones working with stakeholders, collaborators, partners, reading the research, attending the meetings in community. They are the ones who should be consulted. They are the ones should be in the conversation. So if there are changes and nobody's adverse to a change, but it needs to be an informed one. Because when you don't have informed consultation and you just make decisions off of your own inclinations, we now are sitting here talking about 11 pages of amendments because of the lack of consultation and the lack of understanding of what it takes to execute operations and strategy. The strategic impact, it erodes institutional trust, it weakens governance integrity and it jeopardizes long-term accountability. The reorganized organizational structures that are not operationally or strategically functional were also reflected in the budget that sits before us. So the operational impact of that is it disrupts our workflows, the reporting lines and decision-making authority, reducing effectiveness. The strategic impact hinders strategic alignment with OHA's mission and goals comprising long-term impact. It reduced and also added staff. What was extremely troubling about the version that we have before you that is different from the fully vetted administration's budget that was provided to, to the full board was that we have notations. There are formulas, there are explanations to how these budget items were determined. The budget in front of you has none of that. So when we look at when staffing is reduced or added and there's no notations, there's no explanation, how are you as trustees supposed to make an informed decision if that's the right decision? And if we are not consulted, how do you know that those positions are the right positions to carry out the work? If you delete positions, you are unaware if they are already in the hiring process. Again, we have operational, extremely important operational decisions being made by individuals who are not charged with carrying out operations. That is extremely concerning, trustees. The operational impact is unplanned staffing changes strain program delivery and institutional capacity. The strategic impact that it shifts, the shifts in staffing without strategic alignment risk undermining core initiatives and long-term priorities. Next slide. There were inconsistencies and arbitrariness of salary amounts allocated to various staff positions. I do want to clarify for the record and correct the record in the Civil Beat article this morning that I do not make. That is not my salary. That is my salary plus fringe. And I was the only employee across the Office of Hawaiian Affairs that was not budgeted for an increase. So just to be clear, I was the only one in this new budget that does not receive any merit. So the operational impact of the inconsistencies and the arbitrariness of salary amounts that were allocated by this new budget, by those who put this budget together, is that it created morale issues. It's going to create massive morale issues and internal equity, the very thing that the salary ad hoc was supposed to address. It reduces staff, it's going to reduce staff retention and productivity. And the strategic impact is that it diminishes OHA's ability to attract and retain high-caliber talent critical to fulfilling its mission. The very thing that the first presentation is trying to address. It undermines that. There were inconsistency in performance-based merit allocation. Operational impact, it de-incentivized high performance and fosters workplace retention. Excuse me, it's not resentment. Well, that may happen, but certainly it's retention. There was no merit for fiscal year 26. We are expecting our staff to go one more year without an increase. Again, we were trying to bring our salaries up to competitive wages and then we lagged now again behind because there were no merit provided for fiscal, fiscal year 26. Strategic impact, it undermines efforts to build a high-performing culture aligned with strategic outcomes. Elimination of critical MIMO programs, services and grants. The operational impact is it interrupts vital services to the Lahui, leaving beneficiaries underserved. In the budget that's before you today, the work of our OEV wellbeing, our health outcomes pathway, our MIMO strategies under that division was reduced by 97%. All of the work that has been done over the last six months in preparing for this biennial budget were taken out, deleted, not even considered and was replaced by a trustee's priority singularly. That's problematic. The strategic impact directly, it contradicts the pillars of Manu'i Mauliola, weakening OHA's strategic commitments. The very thing this board was concerned about. Their number one priority when I was hired was effectuating this strategic plan and the initiatives, the programs, the tactics that have been under planning and development in coordination with community over the last six months have been eliminated. What I'm talking about here is not just programs, services and funding, but this is a huge hit to our staff who have worked tirelessly to put this budget together. It has affected morale. There is a lot of distrust right now because all of this work has just been wiped out. No explanation, no rationale, no scrutiny, no checks and balances, just gone. There has been disproportionate funding for Native Hawaiian-focused charter schools, which I understand we're going to address, which is good. Because the operational impact of that is that it skews resource allocations, leaving other high-need programs underfunded. Again, when you have folks that are not in operations who make sweeping changes such as the one that is in this budget before you, it's ill-informed and it creates unnecessary stress, stress and strife for those that are affected, both internally within the organization as well as those who are severely impacted when these changes are made. The strategic impact is that there are risk misalignments with OHA's statewide equity and trust obligations. Next slide. There is excessive funding allocated for OHA branding. My question to the board is that we are putting almost a million dollars towards branding OHA. I say put a million dollars towards programs and services because that speaks way louder than any glossy campaign. We don't need, the way we answer the question that the Chair asked on what does OHA do, let's do it in our communities. Let's do it in our schools. Let's do it in our Halepule. Let's do it in, through our community organizations and let's do it through the good work that strategy and implementation, our advocacy teams, our communications teams, our compliance teams. Let that speak louder than a really sexy commercial. Do we have the best website? No. Is it work in progress? Yes. But almost a million dollars towards marketing and branding and one more opportunity to put this meeting out there. There's no larger platform than YouTube. It's worldwide. Do we need to fund Olelo? When we can go on YouTube and get global audience? I would rather use that money for Olelo to put towards our restorative justice, to keep Kanaka out of prison. I would prefer to have a Native Hawaiian specialty court that malamas our family and keeps them out of the court system, keeps them out of prisons. That's how I would rather spend money than excessive funding for OHA branding. These operational impacts, it diverts limited trust resources away from direct services to beneficiaries. Unacceptable. Strategic impact, it undermines fiduciary stewardship. Strategic impact, it undermines fiduciary stewardship when branding is prioritized over community impact. The work we do is the branding. That's what our, that's what our communities have been waiting for. And we finally have a strategy and implementation team to do that. And it has been gutted. Unacceptable. Inclusion of non-OHA asset CIP into grants that are non-solicited and non-competitive puts us right back into the fiscal risk, the fiduciary risk that OHA was in in twenty-eighteen and was called out for. And we have spent a long time trying to rebuild community confidence and credibility that we will do the right thing, that we will be transparent, that we will provide an opportunity for all communities, all organizations to have a chance at getting monies that are for all beneficiaries, not select ones, not ones that we don't know why they were selected. Not that they're not worthy, but there should be a process. Everybody should have a fair shake at getting funds. None of those notes are in the, in the budget. And there are three non-OHA asset CIPs in operational budget of OHA. Even in state government, you don't budget operationally for things that are not owned by the office. I will give you an example. In the legislative process, they have something called grant and aid CIP. That process is solicited. It is competitive. And the reason for that is because the state monies that are going to go towards whoever is awarded is because it does, it's, these are facilities, these are lands, these are construction projects that are not state projects. So you don't add them into your operations. The only CIP that should be in OHA operations are ones that we own. Are only the ones that we maintain and have to repair. That's how you know what your reoccurring and what your reoccurring costs are and what your annual budget needs to consist of. Right now, we have about four million dollars, non-competitive, non-solicited CIP going to three organizations. Again, worthy, but yet I'm sure if we put out a keha right now to across the paeina to our communities, does anybody need money for facilities or construction or repairs and maintenance? We would have a line around the building down the block. Because that's how many gyms need to be repaired. That's how many heil need to be malamad. That's how many schools need to be funded. Who gets to choose? A competitive process. Next slide. The strategic impact of this that it violates principles, I'm sorry, go back. I didn't, I didn't finish me that. The strategic impact here is that it violates principles of trust fund integrity and equitable access, exposing OHA to legal and reputational harm. Trustees, you folks have been down this road before. There's no reason that you need to go down this audit risk again. Next slide. And with that, I mahalo the trustee for the time and for our beneficiaries who have attended today. Mahalo for the opportunity to share.
Thank you so much, Kapu'ana. There are a few, just a few points of clarification before we move on to public testimony. I misspoke regarding the paid family leave program. It is a twelve-week program, not a sixteen-week program that is currently budgeted for. This, the Kapu'ana stated that the OHA trustees did not receive any of the questionnaires. That is not correct. Every trustee received every questionnaire provided by the pae'a along with all of their questions on June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, sent to each trustee's inbox. The CEO stated that she did not receive a single penny increase in her contract, which she gets paid two hundred thousand dollars a year. That is correct. Because we can't increase it. We can increase it if we amend her contract. But we can't do that in this budget. The CEO also mentioned the salary increases. The reality is, is that in the June second budget, the administration's proposal was five percent budget increases across the board. Five percent. The work of the ad hoc committee for frontline staff making less than a hundred thousand dollars a year is anywhere between twelve to twenty-two percent of an increase. There is no comparison in the amount of effort that the ad hoc committee put towards addressing staff salaries here at OHA. And to use that as an example, that a five percent across-the-board increase, even for those that had been there for less than two years, there is no comparison. And that's all I have to comment on that. And at this time, we're going to take public testimony. Lehua. Is there anyone signed up to testify on the action item?
Um, yes, our first speaker is Charles Monoiki Anani.
Aloha. Right there, you're in, you're in a seat. Trustees, our plan is to take public testimony and then we will be taking a recess so we can have some lunch. It will be a very short lunch and then we will come back in and start the amendments. Aloha.
Aloha. Uh, Velina mai me ki aloha, um. Okay, yeah, I'm tall. Velina mai me ki aloha, ya kaka wapu, mahalo, ya uko i kaia no, um. Ya u i kei manava to give my testimony. Um. I wrote some notes while I was listening to the the sharing that was doing earlier. First, I want to thank each of you, um, the trustees, your staff, officers, community engagement people. Thank you so much for the hard work that you do. This is my first time stepping into this office. Um, and I was moved to see and feel the passion that each of you folks gives to our Lahu'i and to our kaia ulu Kanaka and Na. Um. And thank you for supporting the work um, that Kanaka-led and staffed organizations and nonprofit organizations, learning centers are doing. So thank you for doing that and continuing to do so. Mahalo.
My name is Monoiki Anibon. I'm a program manager with Hainu La'au. And which is a program of Hui Maoliola, a grant recipient of Manu'i Maoliola program. And I respectfully and strongly urge you folks, um, urge you to reinstate the two-point-four million dollars in community grant funding awarded to grantees for whom the work is just beginning. OHA developed its Manu'i Maoliola strategic plan that was to guide the organization's efforts forward through twenty-thirty-five. Manu'i Maoliola. We're, um, recognize the following foundations: ohana, moa meheu, and aina, both land and water, as having the power to affect the well-being of native Hawaiians. Kanaka. Now, Hainu La'au was awarded funding to address strategy three of Manu'i Maoliola's program that was woven into OHA's plans to affect change in the areas of education, health, housing, and economics. Strategy three being to advance policies, programs, and practices that strengthen Hawaiian well-being, including physical, spiritual, and mental and emotional health. That is who Hainu La'au is trying to reach. That's how we're trying to do so. As a recent grant recipient, we have spent the past several months increasing kilina building among schools, aina-based learning centers, kumu iki havai'i, and practitioners of traditional Hawaiian healing to come together and share their iki with ohana to malama and nurture that iki havai'i, um, that's been learned so that they may continue to practice that in their homes and share with the generations to come. Our name Hainu La'au, meaning to give drink, hainu, la'au, metaphorically speaking to represent, um, planet, but metaphorically representing our community, the individuals, ohana, that come together. Hainu La'au is an aina-centered ohana enrichment program or aina-based ohana enrichment program that provides a co-learning opportunity for opio and their participating Makua. The program is designed to increase Hawaiian cultural and healing practices, thereby increasing the ohana health and well-being emotionally and mentally, emotionally and mentally that builds confidence and self-esteem to persevere through academic challenges and other challenges that people may experience called life. It's through traditional Hawaiian culture-based healing practices presented by practitioners in their respective fields that Hainu La'au aims to increase the health and well-being of Makua and opio in the home. With the rising cost of living, now more than ever, we need to support pathways of connections to practitioners, ohana and aina from within our education system so that la'au lapa'au, ho'opono'ono, and lomi lomi are within reach. Underutilization of critical health services poses a threat, a great threat, excuse me, to the health of native Hawaiians. This health disparity disadvantages not only youth but also the adult mental health outcomes. It's a multi-generational cycle that perpetuates itself without intervention, um, and without intervention that effectively disrupts this gap. Furthermore, failure to address the current gaps in effective mental health, um, mental health treatment currently presents various life-threatening issues of native Hawaiians of all, um, Kanaka of all ages. The community's current status, as showing baseline data, shows a clear instance of neglect for native Hawaiians in mental and behavioral health programming and policies. Hainu La'au is committed to serving a minimum of ninety participants in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and one hundred and twenty in fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven.
Your time is up. Mahalo. Thank you so much for coming. I really appreciate it. Lehua, who's next?
Our next speaker is Lisa Von Sekona and Chantel Belay.
Uh, yeah, we would take it separately, yeah. You can each do five minutes. Um. Probably if there's members of the general public here that have been waiting, I'd prefer to take them before we do administration. We, we welcome you to come, but let's, let's give the chance for any, um, I see Uncle Rupert here. Any, um, at least in person. Sure.
Put on my glasses, bud. I don't need read, no need. Um, actually, I kind of, I would like to introduce my wife. You like come over here, right? Just stand up. But she don't listen to me, so. Okay, uh, anyway, I just wanted to introduce her because she one of the people when make OHA. Uh, nineteen-seventy-eight Constitution Convention. Us guys from Akipu and Waialo. And, um, we plant taro. And our rivers dry. So we decided to go to the seventy-eight Constitution Convention. So we got her elected to be a delegate. And while she was a delegate uh, with, with, um, John Waher was a delegate. And, um, uh, what's his name? Okay, now. Yeah, well, I get Osimhen, so I gotta ask her. Okay, now. Um, who is the chair of that seventy-eight? Bill Peady. So we got Bill Peady elected as a chair. Uh, but the power was anti-Frenchy Disoro from Waialo and John Waher. And I, I had a backseat driver to tell Charlene what to do. Anyway, she made OHA. And, um, I come from Akipu, Winwood, born at home in Akipu. Mama are pure Hawaiian. Our family come from Akipu for hundreds of years. I went to school, Waialo school. And then I went to Kamehameha. Graduated from over there. And I went to Macallister College where I met my wife. And, uh, so we have three sons, Kalari, Kokawai. Some of you know them. Anyway, um, since we made OHA, we've been watching. Because, uh, oh, you guys made plenty of trouble. Nah, nah. It's been up and down from nineteen-seventy-eight. And, um, but it's made a lot of good progress. And I like the idea that OHA has been pushing to form, reform our Lahu'i. Because our sovereignty was never taken away. Not legally. So us guys, we sovereign. And we have to function that way. The United States not going to recognize us. Her grandfather, Akaka, how long he try? Obama, president, how long he try? It's not going to happen. We just have to be sovereign. And we can get it if we we will get the recognition from our brothers and sisters in the Pacific especially. Because we all in the same boat. Okay. I, uh, oh, I got a power right here. Nah, 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 nah. I want kupuna, so you gotta give me two extra minutes. Okay? Um, anyway, I hope, you know, this organization, I, I've been watching, I worked with you guys before. And, um, we can do good stuff. And let's do it. Okay, and, um, we again, one more minute, yeah. Okay, now. I, uh, I thank you, all of you Boyd people, this hard work, listening to us crazy people. But we all crazy, it's all right. But we have to be respectful of everybody's point of view and work the processes so everybody understand that what they have to say will be fairly heard.
Mahaloonui Loa, thank you for coming and joining us. Lehua, any members of the public?
Yes, we have one more member, um, Blanche McMillan.
To Blanche.
Aloha, no. I'm Blanche McMillan. I am the CEO and the founder of Hui Mahai Aina for the homeless shelter. Today, we hold hundred and six people in our shelter. We hold twenty homeless, I mean, home, twenty kupunas that we take care of, and we have seven sickly with cancer. We take care of our people. I am thankful for being here and thanking you folks, trustees, that you have given me a grant that will provide for our people in Waialo. And that's where I come from. And so I wanted to tell you, thank you very much. And I want you guys to continue on doing this project for the people of Hawaii. Do it for the community. Believe in our people. What I've been through, it wasn't easy when I got this program. I had no help from the city and state. It was all God's work. What I provided today, now we have fifty-nine homes. And we have continued on to put tents in our village where we have in Waialo home area. I will continue on to take care of our people. Even if they're on the streets, when they need me, I will be there for them. I will always love the people. Homeless is the most beautiful people if they only realize how grateful and loving they are. Because why? They needed love from their family. They needed love from everyone. And that's why we carry the aloha in our heart to continue to do our job in Hawaii. To do our program, continue on to do what is helpful for everyone. You know, I believe if we all stay together and help together as one big family and one big ohana, we can move forward with no one stand beside it. We will go for it and do it. Like me, I have people from Wa'ani. I am so happy to help Wa'ani. I am helping all over the Hawaiian islands to put homeless shelters all over to bring our people home on the Aina that belongs to them. And you know, when I do this kind of thing, I have God before me because if not, I cannot move forward. I am so blessed with many good people in the Hawaiian islands that helped me a lot because of their love in their heart. They believe that we can move forward and continue on to do God's work on earth. And you know, I thank you trustee, continue your good job. Because you folks can do your folks' job and believe in your people. So take that walk and never stop and believe in yourself. May God bless you all. Thank you very much. Aloha.
Thank you, Auntie Blanche. Mahalo. Uh, we have one testifier online, um, Venus Rose Maderas.
Correct.
Aloha Venus. Okay, yeah. Following Venus's testimony, we have several, um, members, uh, of our administration and staff that would like to testify, so we'll be going to them next. And the first up will be Lisa. Lisa, excuse me.
Aloha Maikako.
Aloha Venus.
Aloha.
Recognize.
I'm here. Aloha Maikako in Na'una Malama'ohka Aina, Ame'ka Lahui. My name is Venus Kawiokaveku Rosetti Maderas, President and CEO of Halekipa. And I served as a co-chair of the Legislative Group Malama Ohana Work Group. I come before you with deep aloha, kuliana and continued hope for the Lahui, um, for the future of our Lahui. I was able to view the entire board meeting held on June twenty sixth online. And first I wanna mahalo the board members, um, Trustee Akaka, Trustee Lindsay and Trustee Alapa for your willingness to pause and ask the hard but necessary questions. Your efforts to understand the impact of budgetary changes on Oha's staff and programs are not only appreciated, but they are also vital to a process that upholds integrity and pono decision making. Mahalo for demonstrating that our people deserve transparency, engagement and accountability. I also extend my heartfelt gratitude to the Oha staff who had shown courage and deep pelina to their kuliana. Their passionate and honest pleas to do what is right within their respective pa'ia is something we should all honor. They are the backbone of Oha's work and their voices must continue to be uplifted and protected. As a statewide leader and advocate for native Hawaiian children, families and systems change, I humbly ask the board to reflect on the example it is setting not only for Oha, but for the entire state of Hawaii. Oha's board comprised of a hundred percent native Hawaiians can and should be the gold standard of transparency and ethical leadership, especially as it relates to its sacred trust to uplift our Lahui. It's okay to say a mistake and a premature decision was made. It's okay to ho'opono and practice the value we speak so much about to make pono. Lastly, I respectfully renew my strong support and request for the reinstatement of funding for the Native Hawaiian Specialty Court. As I testified on June twenty third, this initiative is not just another budget line item. It is a transformative solution rooted in culture, healing and justice. It upholds the promise of systemic change for native Hawaiian families who have been disproportionately impacted by state systems, especially the child welfare and judicial, judicial systems. It honors the call to return to traditional models of Maoliola and Ho'opono'ono, providing a culturally grounded pathway to restor- restoration and resilience. So please do not let this moment pass without seizing the opportunity to invest in our own solutions led by and for our Lahui. Mahalo Nui for your time, your service and for leading with courage and what is pono. Make aloha, Ame'ke. Oya io. Aloha.
Mahalo Venus. Next up, uh, is a testifier online, Lina Suzuki. Oh, in person, in person. Aloha Lina. Welcome.
This is my first time here. Um, we mahalo Auntie Blanche for, um, sending out the ke'ha. And, um, I'm really emotional right now. I'm a Wa'ani girl. Um, and it is really sad. I mahalo Kai for what he said because Oha is not showing up for us. We invite meetings, you guys don't come. Um, we invite you to meetings on a Friday night. We don't wanna sit in traffic, so we don't come. Um, I wanted to share a story of Kamehemeha first. So if you guys don't know, after Kamehemeha had organized, had conquered all the islands, he went back and worked in Alo'i Patches. And he went back to work with Alo'i Patches because he took enough lives. So he wanted to make sure that he was perpetuating life for his people. I don't see you guys coming to Wa'ani and sitting with us. You guys might have something up Ka'ala Farms and mahalo for that. You guys might have something at a Wa'ani comp where you guys get a special meal separate from us. Um, you guys come with your own agenda, not really listening to community's solutions. Um, and you know what else I feel today? And maybe this is why I feel this way right now. Our kupuna values are not here. I do not feel aloha from the discussions that are being had. Um, I feel very much like there's a dictatorship that happens. And, um, I don't know what gotta do. You came kupuna council before. We do kapua aloha. We do respect the speaker, yeah? And if you get on problem, come in on solution. It's kind of simple. So in Wa'ani, one of our biggest problems really is we get leased lands coming up. Yeah, and you guys may be having your guys discussions, but nobody talking to us. And it would be good if you guys would come, even come into Makua Valley. Talk with the, the kupunas that is actually putting their hand to Aina and doing no work. Um, I'm sorry for the emotions. Um, I mahalo for the progressive, um, look on this budget. It may not be aligned with what a lot of community members want or what some of you guys want, but something gotta change because the way it's set up right now is not working. It is not working for the people. We mahalo Tita that just went share and the work that she do for incarcerated families because that is important. Uh, we wish we had a project like that out on our side, so we're gonna try see how we can kaku and collab with them. Because Wa'ani being the largest population of native Hawaiians, we still sit broken. Today I was gonna wear one shirt with Auntie Frenchie on top and she showing the middle finger. And I never think that that was appropriate. But next time I gotta come to this building, I might have to use that shirt because we're gonna feel like our voices are not heard. But so mahalo for the time. Aloha.
Mahalo. Okay, Le'ua, anyone else from the general public online, in person? Last chance.
Nobody else.
Okay. Then Lisa. And that will be followed by Ke'ha. Of course. Oh, together, yeah, sure. Aloha Lisa and Chantel.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees. I'm Chantel Belay, Grants Manager. Aloha Chair, Trustees and Staff. Uh, my name is Lisa Von Sekona, Director of Community Engagement. And I would like to start off by just sending my deep mahalo to community for coming in today to Auntie and Uncle and those who testified, Tita who testified. Um, your presence here matters. Your voice here matters. And I just want you to know that me personally, as I sit here, I, I welcome an invitation to come to community and, um, attend events that you have and gatherings and meetings. Um, I shared my number earlier and I'm happy to do so. If there's anyone else here as well who, um, is concerned about Oha's presence in community, please reach out to me directly. That is my kuliana and I'm happy to, to speak with you. So please don't hesitate, um, when we possibly we go for lunch break, come grab me. And also, um, if I may just take a quick moment, um, having Venus up before us was a real treat. And I definitely wanted to, um, kaku her work in supporting, um, native Hawaiian families. Um, she spoke of the, um, specialty court, which Oha has been a part of in bringing that, that project to fruition. Um, Oha has taken steps, um, to look at the feasibility of a pilot program. And this program we're talking about, very important systemic change. And systemic change, I feel is definitely one of the directives that Oha should be looking in. We're talking about systems that have been set up to harm Hawaiians and they've been very successful. Child welfare system, our prison system, these are just some examples. And you know when a system is successful? When it continues to feed itself. When native Hawaiians are consistently overrepresented in these systems, that tells you how successful they are. What, um, what Venus was speaking to was how do we make this system ours? How do we make these systems work for us and for our people and about our people? It's about doing it on our own, like Uncle said. We do it. We inform the judiciary and we're in this very special place in time. We have the right people in the right positions who are able to affect change. Our Kapo Ha'ameh is one of those people who's really taking the reins to make these opportunities happen for our Lahui. And I strongly encourage the trustees, please consider what is, what is before us. What Venus spoke to at her last time here was, we're talking about forty five percent of native Ke'ke, our Ke'ke are in the child welfare system. This number has been consistent throughout the years. It's gone up, it's gone down a little bit, but it's always been very, very high. The next ethnic group is at twenty percent, in the twenties, and only thirty three percent of Ke'ke in Hawaii are Hawaiian. That is, that is offensive to me, especially when our Mimo calls for us to support our ohana and our Lahui. We truly need to look at where we can be effective. And this is just one way, one way we can start looking at how our systems are affecting our Lahui and affect change. So I just wanted to say that in support of, of Venus who spoke earlier. And, um, if I may, I'm gonna hand off to Chantel to speak about her grants program.
Of course.
I see, I have a minute and a half left, so.
No, no.
It's okay.
You got your, count as two, so you got ten minutes.
Mahalo. Um, you heard from some of our grantees here today, and I think it was important that they came to speak. Um, I'm here to ask that the line item for the two point four million for our open solicitation competitive process be reinstated. Um, as you all know, a lot of our nonprofits are losing federal funding. And we get calls from our current grantees, we get calls from those who hope to become grantees asking, when are we going to open solicitations? Um, will we increase what we're able to offer because of the loss of federal funds? Um, so I think it's really important. I, I don't know if, if we don't reinstate it, will a lot of these nonprofits be here for the next biennium when we consider that? So I, I request reconsideration for that. Um, regarding the charter schools, um, I, I mahalo Uncle for coming today. Um, as you know, the, uh, allocations right now are very different from what we have done in years past. And the, uh, there's two, two, uh, two streams of funding that we've previously done. One was per pupil based on enrollment and the other was the facilities. And as you can see, the enrollment varies greatly from thirty seven up to over six hundred plus. And so it, that is why we kept them separate so that it was about equity. Um, and I know there's, there will be discussions today about how we can perhaps address what the budget is right now saying. Um, and also the budget eliminated funding for the Kui Kolono Conference. Um, that is a really important conference, as I stated last week, the students prepare presentations, they work on all week. For many students, it's the first time they ever travel off of their islands. Um, and they build pelina with the other Hawaiian-focused charter schools. Kalo is instrumental in organizing that. In fact, this past year in March, they lost their federal funding. Um, so in addition to our forty thousand that we allocate for them, they had to go at the last minute, go out and find close to twenty five thousand, I believe, on their own. They were determined that no matter what that conference was going to happen, the kids would have their opportunities to present and to build pelina with each other. Um, they've been instrumental in serving the schools and helping them with their budgets and helping them with reporting and partnering with us. And, uh, and build and, and helping the schools really unite, um, and work on policy as well. And lastly, I wanted to address the reorganization charge in placing the grants program under SNI. We have always intended to collaborate with SNI on, uh, grants that they will be involved with, making sure we're aligned with Mimo. But it is one part of what we will be doing. We work with the charters. We will be taking on Ho'a Ko'a Ko'a as well and hopefully with the reinstatement of community grants. So we do feel community engagement is the best place for us. We work closely with the BSAs. Um, when we have different events, um, they also are one of the first line with our grantees as well. And so we really want to keep growing that relationship with the BSAs, with our communities, and we feel CE is the best place for that to happen. Thank you, Sh- uh, thank you. Mahalo, Chantel. Um, also, with regards to organizational chart, um, and the, the work that the beneficiary services do in, in community, we'd also like to kindly request that the trustees consider, um, the two additional positions in Hilo Hawaii for BSAs um, to please consider relocating those positions here to Oahu. Um, the need of community, um, here and the amount of events that we have here is much higher. And we would love to have, um, boots on the ground here to serve our Lahui. Mahalo.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you so much. Um, Ke'ha. Thank you. After Ke'ha, we have Ha'lamo. Hi, Ke'ha.
Aloha. Aloha e ke'po'o, hopi, hopi po'o amenar kahuva va'io ke'ena kuliana Hawaii. Ova'ihono o Ke'ha pu'u kapua nui o ke'ya ke'ena. Ke'ha pu'u chiva operating officer. Um, and I just wanna share some manao about our budget process and, uh, my awesome staff over there covered a few other things, so I'll be able to, um, omit that from my testimony. And for those of you who were here last Wednesday, I'm pretty much sharing the same thing. Um, so first I would like to talk about the budget process post-June second. Um, again, reiterating that I do appreciate the efforts to bring regard to the budget process here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Um, it isn't something new to me. I did come from, most recently from the city and county of Honolulu. And so there, we also engage in a very rigorous budget process, um, that includes multiple hearings and, um, opportunities for administration to respond to budget briefing questions that come through from the city council members as well as, um, opportunities to provide amendments. I also do wanna share, um, that city council members also do what they call changes. We call them council ads. So they also have opportunities to, um, add their ads, deletions, and then I guess it feeds up either through council chair or the budget chair. Um, so, but it is all very open, very transparent, and you can see over time what changes are being made, what amendments are being proposed from, um, the, the council. And so that is one thing that I do wanna raise throughout this process. Umaika'i ahiki'i kelala elua o yune. Because I feel that after June 2nd, it was lacking that transparency, that collaboration, that consultation that our ohana has spoken about. And you know, in absence of that, I get it, perhaps, you know, ko'uma na'o, maika'i, if we could all harul up in a room and hammer this out together. Nokapono oka Lahu'i, right? Keeping Lahu'i at the center. But absent of that, I think I would recommend in future for biennial budget process that we hold multiple hearings and that we provide the opportunity to provide feedback, to provide budget amendments. I also do want to echo that there were some significant changes to the budget that you see before you that didn't undergo the line of questioning that our paya did during that month of May. So again, I recommend making tweaks to this process and looking, you know, again, my experience is limited to city and county of Honolulu, but I think it's a solid process, you know, having undergone the process here. So I just wanted to share that. Also, I did want to raise, okay, I already talked about budget versions and making sure we track the changes. Inappropriate assignment of SNI under the COO. Again, I understand the intent to align strategy and implementation under the COO for operational execution, but I must express strong disagreement with this move. Aside from having chok kuli ana already, you know, it is a functional and operational function and strategy and implementation is strategic. That takes a whole other set of skills and focus. And I'll be very honest, as the COO, I don't want to be responsible. I would not want to be responsible for that as well as the operations of our office of Hawaiian affairs. So I do, you know, implore this board to consider keeping SNI under the CEO who ultimately is being held accountable for achieving the outcomes of our mana'i mauli'ola strategic plan. And I think that's something else that I want to raise is, I think the budget that we provided prior was certainly driven by mana'i mauli'ola and our strategic outcomes. And I understand the desire of the board to relook at it and to refresh it. But I feel like it was much more, it was the star of the show in the budget that we had put forward versus now. I feel like it is not as prevalent in this proposed budget. And so this is me, again, imploring the board to consider reinstating a lot of the SNI projects and initiatives that have been eliminated. I'm going to echo my staff's request to restore community grant funding. And I want to clarify that it's 2.4 million dollars annually. So we're looking at a total of 4.8 that has been eliminated over the two fiscal years. And I strongly, you know, again, urge this board to consider reinstating that and to looking at the other projects that have been put before us because we have a competitive grants process and I think that we need to maintain that integrity and be able to support programs across the entire pa'aina. And oyavale no, ko'uma na'o, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and, you know, do the hard work that needs to be done to make this budget Lahu'i centered and pono and, you know, get to the best thing that we can. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Ke'ao. Okay, next up is Haalama, followed by Pony. And Pony will be followed by Kuikai. And that's our last three. Aloha, Haalama.
Aloha eka luna ho'umalu, kahele, ho'epi luna ho'umalu, suza amena ka'uhu vai vai aloa nui kakau. Mahalo for the opportunity to offer testimony regarding the proposed budget amendments. As you are aware, I previously submitted detailed written testimony to the Budget Finance Committee and because all trustees sit on the committee, I believe my earlier statement has already been received by each of you. Today, I rise to briefly but firmly reiterate several key impacts for the Division of Hawaiian Cultural Affairs and broader structural concerns that deeply affect OHA's kuli ana to culture, justice, strategy and indigenous representation. So the first is the removal of the Director of Hawaiian Ethos position. One of the most significant impacts to the work of my division is the removal of the Director of Hawaiian Ethos position. This hire has already been in process and foundational to the implementation of Strategy 4.1 of the Mana'i Mauli'ola strategic plan. More than an administrative post, this position was created to infuse ike Hawaii and onai hana Hawaii into the structure of OHA's operations, internal development and external engagement. The Director of Hawaiian Ethos is not a symbolic role. It's a systems-level investment in cultural integrity, internal alignment and long-term vision. Its removal not only weakens my division's ability to meet agency's cultural charge, it disrespects the framework I was hired to help build. I was brought in under the understanding that three leadership role positions would exist to lift this work. This position was the cornerstone of that vision. Equally troubling is the diminishment of the Hawaiian Cultural Operations Consultant role, a position originally scoped at a project management level to significantly lower-tiered posts titled Hawaiian Cultural Affairs Assistant. This is more than just a change in title. It's a reduction in responsibility, authority and strategic impact. The original role was designed to help execute internal and external cultural initiatives across the departments, support cultural protocol and engage with community experts. The assistant-level classification simply cannot carry out the scope of kuli ana that this work requires. A combined loss of one key position and a downgrading of another deeply compromises our ability to fulfill Strategy 4.1 and serve our Lahu'i effectively. Equally alarming is the decision to reorganize the Strategies and Implementations Division, moving it under the oversight of the COO. In my professional manao, supported by decades of organizational research and lived experience and seeking other organizational examples of native Hawaiian serving and broader community organization that employs a strategy division, Strategies Division should report directly to the CEO. To place a strategy-focused division under the role already burdened with operational responsibility diminishes its function and stifles innovation. It is important to note that prior to the establishment of SNI, the first four years of the strategic plan saw little traction. With the hiring of the Senior Director of SNI, visible progress followed, complete with implementation tools, cross-division alignment and measurable frameworks. This reorganization threatens to derail the momentum and sends unfortunate message about the agency's commitment to sustain progressive strategic transformation. Another serious concern is the defunding of the Restorative Justice Specialty Court, an initiative deeply rooted in healing Hawaiian cultural values and systemic equity. This pilot effort was not just a program. It was a statement that OHA sees and responds to disproportionate harm experienced by native Hawaiians in our justice system. While other initiatives serving far fewer than 1,000 beneficiaries remain funded, this program could progressively impact 200,000 people. And what I mean by that is that every single one of us native Hawaiians will know or have connection to someone affected by this. It has been removed. That's not balance, or I've used the word pono, but for me, my definition is balance. Restorative justice cannot succeed without cultural, emotional, spiritual and structural support. I strongly urge its reinstatement. I must also note that several imperative travel line items were deleted, including the funding of OHA's participation at WIPSI, scheduled for November 16 to 20. WIPSI is not merely just another conference. It's a premier global gathering of indigenous educators and cultural leaders. Several subject matter experts at OHA have already begun dialogue.
Mahalo, Haalama. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have Pony, followed by Kuikai and now followed, Kuikai will be Elena Farden.
Aloha, trustees.
Aloha, Pony.
Chair, Vice Chair. Last week I spoke on behalf of my position as the Director of Economic Development and Business Resilience, but today I come before you as a beneficiary of the trust. Every one of you sitting at this table, I have voted for to sit at this table. My family, my friends, I've advocated for each and every one of you to be sitting at this table and I don't take that kuli ana lightly. And so I share with you on behalf of my perspective of a beneficiary. OHA's legal mandate under HRS 10-6 is clear to adopt and implement a strategic plan that betters the conditions of native Hawaiians. The board adopted mana'i mauli'ola as that plan. Our econ team submitted a 1.33 million dollar implementation budget fully aligned to that strategy. It focused on food system resilience, rural tourism and economic mobility. That budget was cut by 80%. How do we effectuate Mimo without this budget? At the same time, substantial changes were made to this budget, including major additions after the public comment period had already closed. As a beneficiary, I ask, how were those changes and cuts shared with our people? This is a public trust. The trust belongs to us, native Hawaiians. Where is the transparency in this? Trustee Kahele, you've met with every single paya in this organization, but we have not had the opportunity to meet with you. And ultimately, that has caused us to feel dehumanized and unimportant to you as the leaders of this Mimo strategy. As a beneficiary and constituent who voted for each and every one of you, I strongly urge the board not to approve the current FY 26-27 budget as proposed. Instead, show a full and transparent side-by-side of what was removed, redlined and added to the original budget submissions. Provide clear justifications for all changes that, including how they align or don't with Mimo and statutory obligations under HRS 10-6. Engage with beneficiaries in a public-facing presentation explaining these changes and their intended outcomes. This isn't about politics, it's about trust. Our people are watching. Let's lead with integrity. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Pony. Okay, next we have Kuikai, followed by Elena.
Aloha kakau.
Aloha, Kuikai.
Aloha mai kakau ena ka'uhu vai vai o ke'e ya ke'e na kuli ana Hawaii. Ena hua'a'a'a'a'ina kalehulehuku'naka. E'kala Hui, ke'aloha ka'a'a'ina ya'ukupakahi'apau. Much of my testimony today will be what I wrote the other day and read in the Budget and Finance. However, there are a few additions, but I just wanted to make sure that I say it again on the record. And first, if I've offended anybody, kalamai. Hele'au mihi ke'eia. Ova'ono o Kuikai o'kalani a'likuma kanika'au halo. And I serve you as your Director of OIVI Wellbeing and Aina Momona within the Office of Strategy and Implementation, the newest department of OHA, established just a year ago by our CEO to lead the implementation of Mana'i Mauli'ola. Again, Mana'i Mauli'ola, to empower our very life being. OHA's 15-year strategic plan adopted by this board in the year 2020. I choose to serve at OHA because I'm striving to be a good ancestor. The work I lead, my team, through our strategies and investments and relationships is more than just policy. It's a promise, a promise to our mo'opuna that we would leave them a more just, healing and pono world. This is the foundation of my commitment. Over the past year, we have honored this kuli ana. We've convened consultations across the pa'aina. We've stood with beneficiaries in trauma recovery and in transformation. And we've represented OHA, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, on the Malama ohana working group, established by the state legislature to address longstanding inequities in our justice and child welfare systems. That group's 2024 final report makes a resounding recommendation, and I quote, "Create a culturally-based family court system or process for native Hawaiian families similar to tribal courts." And in direct response, our office developed two key initiatives. First, the Native Hawaiian Specialty Court pilot. And second, the Pu'ho'ua Maalama Aina Restorative Justice Program. These initiatives are rooted in ike kupuna, supported by research and aligned with Mana'i Mauli'ola outcomes 3.1 and 3.3, which call for a healing-centered, culturally-grounded approach to systemic transformation. And yet, despite these initiatives, clear alignment with OHA's mandate, the proposed FY 26 and 27 biennium budget includes a 97% reduction to our programmatic budget requests. This level of cuts makes implementation of these community-driven, board-directed strategies nearly impossible. To compound matters, the proposed internal restructuring would remove our department from the direct reporting to the CEO, effectively decoupling strategic implementation from the very office charged with vision and oversight, as outlined in Board Policy and Governance precedent. These changes are not merely administrative, they are existential. They dismantle the very framework this board and CEO built to bring Mana'i Mauli'ola to life. And they send a chilling signal to our Lahu'i that even when we build with community aligned with state recommendations and honor our mo'oku au'ha' of resistance and resilience, our collective efforts can still be disregarded with a single budget post. In addition to that, our compliance team also submitted a request for international and continental repatriation funding, critical to bringing home iki kupuna mea kapu that have been removed from Hawaii. The original funding request was 43,622. The current proposed budget reduces that to 19,390. This reduction risks delaying essential repatriation work until FY 2028. This kuli ana is not only symbolic. It is foundational to healing historical trauma, restoring spiritual balance and upholding the cultural and moral responsibilities of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and that this board has affirmed through your policy. Returning our kupuna home is sacred work and this board has the opportunity to ensure that work continues without delay. Let us be clear, OHA is not just a funding agency. OHA is the native Hawaiian institution rooted in Article 12, Section 5 of the Hawaii State Constitution, guided by HRS 10-3 and governed by its own strategic plan. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Elena.
Is Elena here? Yeah, welcome. Aloha Chair, Vice Chair and Trustees.
Aloha.
Elena Farden, Senior Director of Strategy and Implementation. And I rise in opposition of the FY 26-27 budget that's before you without a collaborative process or an opportunity to make amendments. I'm here not just to defend the budget line items, but I'm asking you to make decisions that are based on generations and not just today's administration. This is bigger than dollars, but here we are, watching core programs that support our Lahu'i, programs backed by data and cultural logic and lived experience, having to fight each other for survival. How did we arrive at a moment where funding for restorative justice initiatives that reduce recidivism and keep our keke out of cages must compete with native Hawaiian medical students seeking to serve our rural communities? All the while, investment in teachers, education, housing and workforce and sex trafficking prevention that literally save lives is weighed against it. This is not our way and I have to forgive you all because I believe it's not your way either. This is a symptom of white supremacy culture and colonialism. This either-or mentality of it's either this program or that is rooted in scarcity and is not who we are as a people. That system was never built for us and it was never meant for us to succeed in it. That system was never built for us, and it was never meant for us to succeed in it. But our kupuna knew better. They knew abundance, and they knew kuliana, and they did both. So I ask you to reconsider what's before you. The Native Hawaiian Specialty Court that you've heard so much about is only 0.7% of the entire FY 26 operating budget. For every dollar you invest in it, that's $12 back. Net present value over five years, $6.65 million, just for that program alone. You could buy two Sea Air Gliders with that. You could renovate three to four community gyms with that money. So I've given you stats before, but the numbers don't seem to sink in. So I'm going to do what the kids call, let me put you all in game. Four, the lies behind the numbers when we think about recidivism. First story is Kaleo, 19, Wa'ana'i, arrested for a nonviolent drug offense. He spiraled into addiction, his record now blocking him from jobs and housing. Quote, he says, "If there was someone who looked like me, talked like me, understood me, I might have had a different path." Next story, Malia from Hilo, mother of three, houseless. She was jailed for missing court over an unpaid fine. Quote, "They never asked if I had a ride, a babysitter, or a roof, just a date and a consequence. That's not justice, that's punishment for surviving." Last story, Ikaika, his is one of being born into the system. He says, "My mother gave birth to me in chains, that's how my story started. No judge ever asked me who my people were, they only saw who they feared I'd become." Ikaika grew up in this system, went through six institutions by the time he was 24. These aren't anecdotes, these are indictments of a broken system. There are opportunities for us to do differently. And by do differently, I mean what we're doing with the budget here today with all of you and with the public watching. To defund this now, after the feasibility studies and the $110,000 that's been invested, would send a chilly message that justice, when it looks like us, is negotiable. Same thing for sex trafficking, that was reduced to $35,000. Do you know why sex trafficking is probably the highest criminal enterprise, more so than cocaine, meth, or fentanyl? It's because they're human entities. Once a product is made and sold and used, you have to make some more. Humans are different. They get used again and again and again, years, decades. So we cannot pit the health of our people against their safety. We cannot force our lahui to choose between healing bodies and healing systems. We can do both. And so I ask this board, for the wait that's in front of you, to think of a collaborative process. The amendments that have to be made to the budget, and I hold you all accountable. Chair Kohele, Vice Chair Souza, Trustee Akaka, Trustee Wahe'eh, Trustee Alapa, Trustee Lindsay, Trustee Ahuna, Trustee Galutaria, and Trustee Akina. I call your names out in this space because I respect you, but also that I hope it's on record in generations to come that they look back and they realize who made the decision today to fund this, to fund this for generations, to make sure that there's impact. So I leave it with you. Mahalo.
Thank you, Elena. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone would like to speak? Last chance. You are welcome. Come, please.
Aloha. Wow, is my hair? You gotta tell me if my hair is cupped.
Please introduce yourself, and you are recognized.
Aloha, Nui Kako, Board of Trustees, to the public and to those of us in the web space. My name is Ma'Ki'ilei Ishihara. I work here as a strategy consultant. And I come before you to speak on behalf of the salary inequities that we see. And it's not just the number. It's looking across the board to job descriptions, it's looking across the board to qualifications that are being requested of, and I know that you all have put in, so first of all, I'm sorry, I didn't say mahalo, for the hard work that you folks have done for the ad hoc committee, all the hours you have put into the budget, mahalo. And I want to, I want to encourage us to even push the envelope a little further, that I know you folks are all here and committed to doing as our board, as our leaders, in partnership with our administration, in which I have the great privilege of working. And I really implore you to take a look at these further. We have so many qualified individuals. And I gotta say, first looking at the salaries across the board, I was, I had questions. I couldn't exactly understand why some are listed exactly, and then others, it was the proposed budgeted amount. And I, I'm sure that others looking at this had questions as well. And I want to ensure equity for those, I just landed here last year. And I'm gonna come, and I came before you at the other meeting, and I come before you again now to push for that equity for the people that I have the pleasure of working with, that have been so strong and resilient over these years that I have not been here. And now I'm here. And I would really like to see that reflected moving forward for them, not just for me, for them. Because among those of us here who are kanaka and are lahui, of those who are part of the lahui who don't have, who are not kanaka o'iwi, they deserve that. And I want to honor them. And to those of us who have come before here on this board like you, or those who are in administration, I would like to see that equity resounding moving forward. And it's not, I hope that my comments don't come off as strong-handed. I want you to know, each and every one of you here, that I sincerely appreciate your leadership. It's not easy. It's difficult. People are gonna speak about you, people are gonna criticize every move that you make, every decision that you make. And I come before you because we are trusting in you to make that pono decision, and we talk about pono all the time. It's in our policies, it's in our bylaws. It's plastered across everything we do. And I ask you to please let your na'au, and let the words that have come here at this meeting to fortify that, those decisions that you have to make today that are pono, in every sense of the word. And I implore you to continue to do the hard work as best you can, in every way you can, in partnership with us. Because we like to say we're one Ohana. And Ohana will come to the table, this beautiful table. No matter how hard the conversation is, and I appreciate you charging for the conversation, no matter how hard and how crazy it might get, please continue. Please push for pono in everything we do. And keep building pelina. Be pelina-focused, it's so easy to draw a hard line in the sand and say, "Oh yeah, you and us, us and you." I want us to see each other on the same side. I want us to move together towards the common goal, which is e'er, like sovereignty for our people in every sense. And sometimes, when our perspectives are so different, that's not a bad thing, but we gotta trust that if your perspective is different from mine, there might be a kuwana iki, there might be some vai vai in the way that it's being presented. And I trust you to get me, because here we are at the same table. Here we are for the same mission and vision. And I really hope that through all of that little talking, stream of consciousness, that it made sense to you today and it speak to you. But mahalo once again for the opportunity to speak, mahalo for all of the hard work that you all have done. Mahalo to our Pohana, our CEO, CFO, and all of our leaders who have spoken today. Mahalo.
Mahalo. We have Ka'imo next.
Aloha, Kako. Start with, it's a Kako thing, hey, Kako, Kako. We're gonna hola mu'a. I've been here for 27, going on 27 years. We've always moved together, our canoe moves forward, and it's always been a Kako way. With us, the administration side, it's you, the trustee's side, it's always been together. The issues are tough, the budget is tough, but together, we have to do it together. We hear all sides, I hear all sides from all programs. It is a tough decision, but I've been here for 20-plus years. We've done it, right, trustee? We've done it. He's been here. We've done so many things that have been miraculous, unbelievable outcomes. And because of us, the past, the present, the future, the mission of this organization will sustain itself in a Kako way. We know what we need to do. So I want to be here to encourage you to ho'olohe, to come with your na'au, and to just be together so that all the, all the namea hawa'i apau, hiki, hiki no, hiki. Eh, holo pono, ika pono, meka malama ike kahi, ike kahi. Aloha ike kahi, ike kahi, na keke, na, na Ohana, namea apau, na aina apau, na vai apau, na kahi apau, eh, hiki ke malama kahi. Noka mea, koka'ko kuliana o ke'i, a ke'e na kuliana o Hawaii'i nei. Alaila, holo mu'a, meka akamai, meka na'au pono, ke olu'olu. Me'kala'ano, hiki no, ke holo mu'a vale no, ika pono, a malama pono no, namea apau, kako apau, no ke'i apai aina. Oya ko'u, ko'u manau no'oko, me ko'u na'au. Aloha, mahalo, Nui. I work here for so too long. I've witnessed changes, changes. The tides have changed every time. I've been here and I've been there, up, down, all around. Budgets come and go in my, has come and go in my way. My dear friends, my coworkers have come and go. But I've seen this organization do the, the best and the fabulous outcomes in dealing with all the trauma issues that we face. Our Ohana has so much traumas that in a collaborative way, Kako, that's why I stress Kako, and it's not only Kako with us, it's Kako with everybody outside of the walls of this organization. That's where it begins, and I've seen it occur over and over when we become one with all the rest of the Ohana outside of this office walls. So please, please, do it in a way that is a Kako manner, and I know you will. I know you will, because that is who we are. And oya paleno ko'u, and ah, mahalo.
Mahalo, Ka'imo. Lehu'a, do you have anyone else signed up?
There is no one else signed up.
Okay, trustees, at this time, I'd like to go to community concerns and celebrations out of respect for... Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Akina?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I don't know if this is an appropriate time for a trustee to make his summary comments. I'm just a bit fading here, nearly 1 o'clock where I'm traveling.
Yeah, it's, it's, stand by, trustee Akina. Okay, it's not on our agenda to do this now. However, the trustees, through unanimous consent, given our colleague's geographical location on the other side of the world, would like to make his remarks. And trustee Akina? Is that, do I have unanimous consent? Take this item out of order. Okay. Trustee Akina, you are recognized.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us.
I appreciate that, Chair, and I appreciate it, my fellow trustees. And at the end of the day, I stand with you on what you decide, and we will hola mu'a together no matter what. I felt that the two most remarkable speeches I heard today were from our Chair and from our CEO. Both of them were impassioned speeches. They were about the ultimate end of OHA, which is to better the conditions of Native Hawaiians. And I was proud of what was said. I didn't agree with everything said in all of them, but I definitely believe that the ends we're aiming at are the same. And that's why it has been so difficult and hard to see the divisions and the rift that have occurred in our organization recently. And it's not really about the budget, it's about deeper issues. But I'm hoping and I'm praying that we will be able to come together and resolve them, because in the end, we want the same things. My views are known on some of the budget issues. I will spare you going through my list of about eight or nine items that I am concerned with, but there are a couple that I think we really need to pay attention to. One is the capital improvement projects. There are protocols there, and there are procedural, as well as organizational acquisition issues that we've not attended to, that could really come back and haunt us. Giving ourselves a little more time, even up to a month more, to process that would be helpful. Another issue, of course, is the role that we have accorded to the administration in this budget. I have, in the past, often said that I believe that the board is responsible for policy and for governance, and I think we do a good job at approaching those issues. At the same time, it's the administration that should be left to management and operations. My concern about this budget is not so much the dollars or the personnel assignments, but who's making the dollar in personnel assignments? We as trustees really need to set the bottom line when it comes to policy, when it comes to overall governance. But we need to be able to empower our administration, our CEO and others in the administration, to be able to do the operations, to be able to do the management. And there's a delicate balance in maintaining that, and I think that this, this budget crosses the line on that. Now, if it were possible, I would like us not to pass the budget today with the goal of working on it over the next month. We've worked so hard, we've come so close to completing it, that we certainly have the resources with which to have a stopgap budget for the short term. I will leave that to you as my colleagues to consider, but I want you to know that I stand with you, and I believe that we can come to ultimate resolutions. But in the end, it's not really about the budget. It's about the way that we choose to lead and to manage. And I think we really do need to uphold and empower our administration as much as we can. They're fine people, I've come to respect them and appreciate them greatly for their dedication and their commitment to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and to our lahui. And I thank you for allowing me to make these comments at this time. I'm going to apologize that I'm going to sign off before the end of the meeting today. Mahalo.
Mahalo, trustee Akina. And, and given the fact that you are going to sign off, and that we realize you're on the other side of the world, we will be sharing, when we come back from lunch, a side-by-side comparison of the June 2nd and the proposed budget in front of us. There are 489 total lines in the budget. 410 of them are nearly identical. 84% of the June 2nd budget is this budget. And to mischaracterize it any other way is not accurate. Trustees, we're gonna move on to community concerns and celebrations. Do we have unanimous consent to do that? Thank you. Lehu'a, do you have any, anyone signed up to speak to community concerns and announcements? No?
No one is signed up to speak on community concerns.
Robert? Tom, Robert's there? Okay. All right, if we don't have any community concerns and announcements, we are going to recess for lunch and reconvene at 2:00 PM.